To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could you please call the roll?
Council, agency member Falcone?
Here.
Francisco?
Here.
Horton?
Here.
House?
Schneider?
Here.
Williams? Mayor, Chair Bloom?
Here. Okay, are there any changes to the agenda? Okay. Public comment, I've got a couple minutes each, and I've got one, two, three, four of us. Okay, Bob Hanson will be followed by Lazarus. Turn on that microphone and start the clock when you get up there. There you go.
Wanted me to do what when I got up here?
No, I said I'm gonna start the clock. I'm talking to myself.
Okay. Two minutes. Right now, you passed an RV parking ordinance a couple months ago, and people have moved from those areas because there's signs saying no RV parking. So now they're on Quarantina Street in front of Marbord, and there's signs going up there because the traffic manager probably got complaints, and put signs up saying no RV parking. So on March the 2nd, they're gonna enforce that. I'm asking you, and as a community, people in the community, what can we do to help these people? Instead of running them out of town? Can we find someplace to park? Maybe out on the airport property? There's a piece of property over by the Casa de la Raza that looks like it's up for sale. But something, instead of what's happening. And what's happening is they're gonna move someplace else, and pretty soon, we're gonna be like a lot of other cities and have no parking of an RV in our community.
Thank you.
We could come up with some solutions. I noticed that Eia was announced yesterday that she's a solution kind of person. I believe that most of you are. So instead of just having signs saying you can't park your RV, I would love to see us work out some solutions. People could pay to be in this place, park their car. They could do volunteer work. But somehow, we could do a lot better than what's going to happen. What's gonna happen is a sad situation that I don't think is humane. Because basically, these people, they might be in an RV, and some of them might not look the nicest, but they're still in our community, citizens of our community. They've been here for quite a few years. So thank you, and as it gets heated, we'll see how it goes. And DOS, you gotta check it out over Quarantina Street. It's a lot of signs there and a lot of RVs. Thank you.
Thank you. Lazarus, followed by Ruth Wilson.
Madam Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, council? I went to come last week when you were here, so I wanted to talk about the shelter, and I lost the lady's name who was in the newspaper with her commentary about the shelter, how Casa Esperanza provides housing for people. You know, this is what we were talking about before, fraud. It's complete fraud. You know what Casa Esperanza provides basically is? 200 beds during the winter shelter, up to 30 probably during the other months. And mostly, what they do give you is a mattress and a blanket. The rest of it is all just referrals. Well, you know, people like me, who have been homeless for umpteen years, wow, we already know where to go. It's just we haven't accomplished anything by going there. So, you know, when people tell me, well, it's okay for Casa Esperanza to solicit funds for me, and I've called the police department, and I have requested that fraud charges be brought against them, they tell me it's a civil matter. And I don't agree. I think it's a criminal matter. I think it's evident that I'm still standing right here homeless, without assistance, that these people are not providing for me. Okay? And they said they would. So that's fraud. That is a criminal matter. If they want to keep it up, you know, we're gonna take it to court. I'm going to court here on some other stuff, and I'm gonna bring this up to the judge. So that's part of the reason that I'm going to court. And I'm not gonna back down. You set out whoever you want to harass me. You've done it before. And you know what? I think it's becoming really evident that that's what happens. Because we have all these dismissed cases in the court, have all these cases I've won. And I think that what's gonna happen is the evidence is finally gonna overcome your gossip, hearsay, your rumors, and your flaws. Thank you.
Thank you. Ruth Wilson will be followed by the last speaker, Julie Cooper.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and City Council members. These are hard times, and I think God is going to bring something really good out of this because He's really causing us to really look deeply within ourselves and pull forth our moral character. Now, it was wonderful, Madam Mayor, that you went to Washington and you heard President Obama speak. And he was really caring about the mayors and the towns. And there is money coming, but I know a lot of distress is going on about exactly how that money should be spent. And there was a young disabled man in our Holy Chaos group on Sunday, very, very scared about how deep these budget cuts are, that how they're going to affect him in his wheelchair and his allotment of money. Now, Rick Warren is teaching us that it's not about us. It's not about me. It's about serving others. And I thank you so much for serving others. And I just lift you up right now to the Lord because none of us in our humanness know exactly the decisions to make. And so I ask that He would be predominant in you through His Holy Spirit, that He would guide and direct you in making these very important decisions that I know you want to make correctly. And so I ask, Lord, bless them and keep them, and make Your face to shine upon them. Turn Your countenance toward them and give them Your peace.
Okay, Julie Cooper will be the last speaker. Hi, Julie.
Hi, Mayor, councilpeople. My name's Julie Cooper. I'm an RV-er. And I'm trying to figure out why, when we were parked to the south of the freeway, that y'all put up signs there, moved us to the north of the freeway, and we were living quite nicely until y'all decided to put signs to the north of the freeway. I've been here 20 years, and I am not leaving Santa Barbara. This is my home. You cannot run me out. No matter what y'all do, y'all are not gonna make me leave. I, for one, am gonna stand up and fight this because I believe it is right. The poor people of this community is not going to go away, especially when you've got the economy the way it is. It is just going to get worse. And I don't think, unless y'all address the problem correctly, that y'all are gonna fix the problem. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. We have the consent calendar next. Go ahead and read by title only, Brenda. Thank you.
Item number three, recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only and ordinance of the council of the City of Santa Barbara, amending Title 29 of the Santa Barbara Municipal Code to rezone 9.04 acres of airport approach and Operation Zone AA0 to Aviation Facility Zone A through F in the coastal zone at the Santa Barbara Municipal Airport. Item number four, recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only and ordinance of the council of the City of Santa Barbara, adopting a specific plan for the Los Portales, Specific Plan Area SP-10 Zone for property located at 535 East Montecito Street, Assessor's Parcel Number 031-351-010. Item number five, recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only and ordinance of the council of the City of Santa Barbara, approving and authorizing the city administrator to execute the property transfer agreement with the State of California Department of Transportation, and subsequently, subject to review and approval by the city attorney, to execute any deeds to provide for the transfer of certain properties owned in fee by the City of Santa Barbara, required for the state highway route 101 Milpas Street to Hot Springs Road Operational Improvements Project, and accepting the ownership in fee of certain non-freeway properties to be relinquished by the State of California Department of Transportation, underlying and adjacent to the roundabout at Milpas Street, now existing adjacent to state highway. Item number six, recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only and ordinance of the council of the City of Santa Barbara, approving a 10-year license agreement with the Santa Barbara Youth Sailing Foundation, effective March 26, 2009, for a 2,500-square-foot water space in Marina One at initial rent of $595 per month. Item number seven, recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the council of the City of Santa Barbara, amending Resolution Number 08-061, the Position and Salary Control Resolution for fiscal year 2009, affecting the Housing and Redevelopment Division of the Community Development Department, effective March 7, 2009. And item number eight, recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the council of the City of Santa Barbara, authorizing the city administrator to submit a Renewable Energy Secure Communities Grant Application to the California Energy Commission for $2 million to initiate the design and installation of renewable energy projects for municipal facilities.
Okay, thank you, Brenda. That was reading by title only, and without objection? That's...
Madam Mayor, I need to pull item six and vote on that separately. I need to abstain.
Okay, and we're gonna pull item four, and then...
Madame Mayor, items 10 and 11, please.
Okay.
And I'd just very briefly like to pull item eight.
Eight, okay. Wait just a second. Eight, wait. 10, 11. Okay. And what was yours again, Ms. Falcone?
Number six.
Six, okay. Thank you.
I'll just move item six.
Okay, I'll second it. And did you want to talk about...
No.
She wants to abstain, so we just need to vote on that.
Ah, I'm just a little slow here. Too many people coming at me. Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and abstained?
Abstained.
Okay, thank you. And then, item, let's go back. Item number four?
I'll move item four.
Which is the 535 East Montecito Street?
Second.
Specific plan. We have a motion and a second? All those in favor? Okay, go ahead, sure.
I just wanted to say briefly, I know we talked about this a little bit last time, but the more I think about it, and this isn't my only problem with this, but allowing seven years to go by before the beginning of, necessary beginning of construction on this lot, I think it sets a bad precedent. It's, I mean, we obviously, we don't want to get into a situation such as law and trada again. And granted, this is in the M1 zone, and there are other possible uses for it, but I think that, just generally speaking, we should not be allowing, especially when we're giving, essentially, a special benefit to the developer, we should not be having these seven-year timeframes. It's too long. Thank you.
Okay. And I, too, had objected to changing the zoning from our, yeah, from R1 to, no, from M1, thank you, to residential. So that's why I will be voting no. So, item four, all those in favor, please vote aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, thank you. And now, there's a couple more. We have item eight. Mr. Williams?
I just wanted to highlight this, that this is a partnership, that we are attempting to submit a Renewable Energy Secure Communities Grant Application to the statewide CEC, not the local CEC, the California Energy Commission, for $2 million to initiate the design and installation of renewable energy projects for municipal facilities. I think this is really a good way to handle things when we have less resources in the general fund, but we still want to see the city making progress towards renewable energy and energy independence that we're applying for this grant. I think it's a good thing.
Okay, so you don't need to vote on it separately?
I don't need to vote on it separately.
Anybody else? Okay. Mr. Horton? Oh, you're looking at yours. Item number 10 is Authorization for Legal Services for the Cabrillo Bridge Replacement.
On both 10 and 11, my question will be the same, which deals with, I know that the number of projects is considerably lower now than it was a few years ago. And I'm wondering if it's possible to redistribute workload within the department and thus not need to contract. I also note that we do use one of these contracting agencies a lot. And I also wonder if that's the way we need to go at this time.
Okay, I think what we're talking about is, on item 10, you're talking about hiring outside legal services, which we've done before on this. But do you want to talk to that? I don't know. Maybe Mr. Wiley wants to do that. Mr. Wiley?
Madam Mayor, yes, I think it might be appropriate for me to respond with respect to item number 10. This is a up-to-$50,000 contract to hire a best-best in Krieger, a particular attorney at that firm that has in excess of 20 years' experience in eminent domain condemnation law, which is a specialty our office really does not have. We don't frankly expect it to cost anywhere near $50,000. There's already active negotiations, discussions with these property owners. Unfortunately, in a way, there are a lot of different property owners. It's second, third-generation family owners of this property, and it's a fairly complicated condemnation in terms of how it impacts the building. This is at the Cabrillo Bridge project. So we hope those discussions will resolve this without the need for an eminent domain action, but because of the number of people involved, that might not be possible. As I say, I don't expect it to cost this much, and we really do need this kind of expertise. And finally, and frankly, the fact that the state is paying 88% of this, and it is kind of a city-state project, a state highway, or a former state highway, is a factor as well.
Thank you, Steve. That answered my question. Similar question on 11.
On 11, it's Listero wastewater treatment. This is a contract with Coroll Engineers, and we do have them on a short list of engineers that we use.
Madam Mayor, if I might respond to that. Councilmember Horton, Coroll Engineers was selected through an RFP process back in May of 2007. This is really the second phase of this project. The first phase was to do an alternative study for the headworks screening. That's the first part that goes into, that is really, takes out the large debris and breaks up the matter to treat the inlet that comes in. They did an alternatives analysis for about $37,000. We always break up our contracts to make sure that they are doing a good job before we award the second part of it. It is a large contract, but it is a large project, too. It's a $4.2 million project. It's running under 10% for the design of it, which is, by industry standards, low. So we think we're getting a fair deal with that. It's also important to remember that we pay our consultants on an hourly basis, and we negotiate those hours down. So we spend a lot of time looking at their tasks, their individual tasks, and negotiate it down. This is a very complicated project. It has elements of structural, electrical, civil, and biological professions in it. We don't have the in-house capability to perform such a project.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
Okay, thank you very much. You don't need to vote on those separately? Okay. Then entertain a motion for the rest of the...
I'll move the rest of the consent calendar.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Very good. That's the end of the consent calendar. Item number 16, oh, report from the Finance Committee. Sorry, Mr. Horton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Finance Committee met today at 12:30 for an exciting meeting, which I can't say about all of our meetings, but this one was. And we discussed the redevelopment agency interim financials and the January 2009 investment report, but the main item on the agenda today was the Airport Terminal Project Financing Update. Mr. Pearson provided us with a quantity of very good information. We had a thorough discussion. And we will be recommending on to council the recommendation to proceed with the bids on this project.
Okay. And it will come to us, I think they said the 10th, right? Okay, thank you. Two weeks. That's the 10th of March. Wow. Time is flying, huh? Okay. Item number 16, please.
Item number 16, Strategies to Address Community Issues Related to Homelessness in the City of Santa Barbara.
Okay. We're gonna turn this over to Ms. Falcone. We had three people on a council subcommittee. It was Ms. Schneider, Mr. Francisco, and Ms. Falcone. And they had several meetings, and so they're gonna report to us and ask for our concurrence with them. Go ahead, Ms. Falcone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Oh, what do I do here? Just hit the forward button? Is that the thing? Okay. Technology, you know. It's a scary, scary deal. Well, thank you very much. And yes, Mr. Francisco and Ms. Schneider were the other members of the committee. I had the honor of chairing this group. And we had a total of nine meetings, I believe, at the end of the day. Very long meetings. On June 17, 2008, the Santa Barbara City Council established... How does this work, Jim? Oh. Chewing gum and walking. Why doesn't Sue take this and do it? Much easier. Okay, okay. Oh, I got it. All right. Here we go. "On June 17, 2008, the Santa Barbara City Council established a council committee comprised of three council members that I just mentioned, to study a range of issues related to homeless, services, and neighborhood impacts. This committee was charged with making recommendations to the full council, with input from the community members, on strategies to address five identified issues." These are the five issues that we started with in the beginning. "Coordination between city police and homeless street outreach staff to reduce calls for service to city police. Recommendation from the Milpas Action Task Force to consider establishing a recovery zone or an alcohol impact zone in the lower Milpas Street area. To address aggressive panhandling, primarily in the downtown corridor. To gain support of the courts, the district attorney, and county probation to curb negative behavior, in other words injunctions and increased penalties, and require offenders to receive services and treatment to get back on the track of recovery. Utilization of existing shelter services to more effectively assist the most vulnerable homeless persons." "A series of nine community-type forum meetings were held from July 2008 to January 2009, including an initial planning meeting, meetings on each of the five issues, two meetings to gather public input, and the subcommittee's initial response to the recommendations, and a final meeting to receive any last input from the public and to finalize the recommended strategies that are before you today. Two working task groups were formed out of the participants to deal specifically with increased coordination of outreach workers and to address panhandling. These two subgroups, task groups, reported back to the subcommittee with their recommendations. Four of the subcommittee meetings were televised on Channel 18, the October 22, the November 13, the December 18, and the January 29. A website was also developed with agendas, minutes, and draft recommendations, and updated frequently." "The subcommittee members gathered input from, I'm happy to say, I believe we had all the stakeholders in the room at almost every meeting. The business community, the neighborhoods, the faith-based organizations, the service providers, the homeless advocates, the persons experiencing homelessness or housing-challenged, as I've heard the term, county and city representatives. We also had representation from probation." "The recommended strategies presented have been organized into three categories: enforcement, intervention, and prevention. For the purposes of this, so that y'all don't have to listen to me the entire time, Dale is going to take the enforcement slides. He's the representative from the ordinance committee, which is where these ordinance will go next if passed by this full council. I will talk a little bit about the intervention and coordination piece, and then Helene will do the prevention as she is the 10-year-plan representative." So with that, I'm going to pass this little device, which Dale knows intimately more how to figure out. Down to Dale. And I thank you.
Now we'll find out what its range is. As Eia said, part of our recommendations are actually some new ordinances. And one of them is an ordinance that would place restrictions on certain types of aggressive panhandling. And I would like to make clear that when we're talking about solicitation and areas in which solicitation would not be allowed, when we say solicitation, we're not talking about someone simply sitting at a bench with a sign that says, "Please help." That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about people who actively, actually, verbally accost someone. And so what this proposed ordinance would do is it would restrict where this sort of solicitation could happen. It would not be allowed, for instance, at bus stops, at road sides. And that means people would not be allowed to solicit from people in a vehicle. It would not be allowed within city parking lots or parking structures, within the outdoor dining areas of restaurants, within 25 feet of an automated teller machine, in a queue of five or more people lining up on the street, or while seated on a public bench or chair. And this is something that has been, we discussed this, and obviously worked with the city attorney on this, to craft something that we believe will curb some of the worst behavior, aggressive panhandling behavior downtown, and still respect the constitutional rights as they've been established in the courts for people to quietly solicit." Just again, to reinforce this, this is not talking about people with a sign, just quietly making people aware that they're asking for donations. And it's also important to realize that this enforcement part of the program is just one part of the three. It goes along with intervention. And for instance, it's very important that this particular ordinance be coordinated with the idea of a compassionate giving campaign, which we'll get to later in this. But the basic idea is, we want to educate the public about the bad effects of giving money to panhandlers. The vast majority of the money that is solicited by panhandlers ends up being spent on drugs and alcohol. And in fact, by giving money to panhandlers, most of the time what you're doing is helping them commit a slow form of suicide. And so it's very important that we educate the public to that problem and direct them to give their money to any of the many organizations in Santa Barbara that exist to help people get out of this destructive life. Another thing that we're recommending is that we expand our cooperation with the courts and with the probation department and other government agencies, and target certain very, very specific areas where we think we can have the most effect. One of these proposals is a frequent offender program. The idea here is that if you look at the total number of offenses committed in the city, it turns out that a relatively small number of people are committing a disproportionately large number of offenses, and that if we focus our attention on those offenders, it will be far more effective. So for instance, one of the figures that the police department shared with us So for instance, one of the figures that the police department shared with us for open container violations, for instance, there were a total of 2,332 people cited last year for that offense. The top 10 of those 2,000-odd people who were cited were responsible for almost 10% of all the offenses. So it's that sort of, and that's replicated in other areas as well. So the idea would be for the police and for the city attorney to focus on those top offenders and charge them with misdemeanors rather than mere infractions, which just keep cycling them through the system without any consequences. And of course, the idea behind that is not simply to punish people, it's to give them an incentive to stop the negative behavior, to stop the downward spiral that they're on. Similarly, just as a relatively small number of people are responsible for a disproportionate percentage of the offenses, similarly, there are certain particular areas in town that have a much, much higher occurrence of these kinds of crimes than anywhere else. So similarly, we are asking the police department to focus, and the city attorney's office to focus, on these areas and to charge offenses in those areas, again, as misdemeanors, to discourage that kind of behavior. One of the ideas that came to us was the idea of, especially in the Milpus Street area, is gaining greater control over the availability of alcoholic beverages there. That's a tough problem. We have had success in recent years working more closely with the alcohol beverage control folks from the state. But this idea would be to actually lobby the state for laws that would give us even greater control at the municipal level. And finally, to develop an assessment protocol, that is, to come up with a statistical way of measuring the results of these programs. I mean, it seems logical that by focusing on the people who cause the greatest number of crimes and focusing on those areas where crime is most prevalent, that if we do that, that we should get results. But we want to make sure that that's actually true. So there needs to be an objective statistical way of measuring how this works. Another thing that we can do, and that we're always doing, that the police department is always doing, is looking at, as patterns of crime shift over time, what is the best way to deploy our limited number of officers to effectively address that. And one of the things that we've talked about is increased restorative policing, and also the possibility of working with the downtown organization to fund a retired police officer full-time specifically for the work of restorative policing. And for those of you who are unfamiliar with that term, restorative policing is really about focusing on those people among the homeless with serious mental problems. And unfortunately, there are people, there are a lot of people out there on the street who have serious mental illness. And just treating them as criminals is not enough. We need to do everything we can to help get those people into treatment. And so people who specialize in restorative policing are trained to work, especially with those people, and try to get results. And now we're on to the next area. Pass the magic item.
Well, the idea of a recovery zone came from the Milpus Action Task Force, which was...
Okay. The idea of a recovery zone came from the Milpus Action Task Force, which was made up of merchants, folks representing the CASA, Esperanza, neighbors, a whole variety of people who work and live and do business in the Milpus Corridor. And also, there was a model that we looked at that came from Seattle, actually. And we worked with the county DA and probation department to request that the local judges, when imposing probation conditions, issue and enforce a stay-away order in connection with a felony drug conviction to prohibit probationers from being within the areas designated as the Milpus Area Recovery Zone. One of the problems that we came up with, that we ran into when trying to devise what this would actually look like here in Santa Barbara, is that in Seattle, for instance, and in places where it's worked, in Los Angeles, there are actually fairly specific delineated areas that you can sort of draw a line around or wrap your arms around. We don't have that here. You know, it's much more amorphous, and we have issues that happen all over the city. So where to draw these lines and how to lay down this recovery zone, we found to be impractical for all working purposes. So in order to address some of this, it's really just for the hardcore felony drug convictions. And that gives the police a little more teeth to be able to get to the folks who really are just preying on the very vulnerable. And that, we found to be useful. We developed a policy of conditional use permits for the new ABC permatees within the area generally defined as the Milpus Corridor that limits the type of alcohol and the type of single-sale alcohol containers which may be sold within the Milpus Area Recovery Zone. That does seem to work in Seattle, and we thought that it would be interesting to try it here because the argument is that, well, they'll just go, you know, people will just go find it elsewhere. And that may be true, but we have been working very, very hard in the downtown corridor, in the entertainment district, with ABC, Alcohol Beverage Control Board, and have developed a really effective relationship with them. So I know that they're going to be trying to help us in any way that they can. So we're going to work on that. And have the police department take an aggressive stand on new liquor licenses and enforce ABC violations. There's really one guy who handles the territory that encompasses Santa Barbara, but it's also a very large territory for ABC. And sometimes he gets behind, but we're going to help him. Number five is to encourage coordination and cooperation of street outreach teams and the police department to work with those on the top 100 open container offender list. Dale referred a little bit to the top 100 open container list, and that it really is, you start at the top and work with the top 10. And in the meeting with the street outreach folks, it was very productive. And people, for the very first time, really, a lot of them, saw what the other ones are doing. And so the coordination between all of the various different, kind of like we're doing with the gangs, and the folks that work with the youth violence prevention, same model, same model applies. You have a hub, you have someone who coordinates all the various different outreach opportunities and workers in coordination with the police, so that when the police do pick someone up, even just to get them treatment and just to get them help, that it is much more organized in terms of what services are applicable to what person for what reason. Is it mental health? Is it detox? You know, exactly what is it? So the coordination is critical. To work with, to bringing our community home, which is the Santa Barbara 10-year-plan and chronic homelessness, to take on the coordination of the outreach workers and the police officers, and encourage them to apply, encourage the 10-year-plan folks to apply to the human services funds if resources are not currently available. Now, I understand that they've done that and that it's looking good. So we're all very hopeful that this comes together, because this is an intricately woven plan. Encourage the outreach teams to build on the current weekly meeting that's held at Cottage Hospital, to work with street outreach providers to secure funding needed to keep current levels of service, and encourage them to apply for city and county human services funding. To hold quarterly meetings with the police department and street outreach teams to enhance collaboration. People have to keep talking. They can't just go back to their corners. They need to keep this structure alive. Inform street outreach teams prior to major homeless enforcement actions, so they can contact people living in the camps and use an opportunity to offer services. So that's really preventative, almost, you know. Develop an assessment protocol to measure the success of coordination and cooperation of street outreach teams and police department in working with chronic offenders in conjunction with assessment protocols, which were mentioned earlier on and will be mentioned again. There are three different assessment protocols for three different functions that we want to be able to track and measure. This is really critical, and I know that this is not within the purview of this particular subcommittee, and really, it won't be coming to this council in its original state either. But the review and/or possible changes to a CUP start at the planning commission. So that's where that conversation will happen. But in that regard, when it happens, if shelter service providers wish to amend their conditional use permit to allow for an increase in their year-round beds for vulnerable populations, we will work with them and their neighbors in the amendment process to assess the potential impact on the neighborhood and identify mitigating strategies. And if, and this is totally up to the CASA, if they were to ask for an expansion or a change, then we would recommend that any additional beds be used, as I said, for vulnerable populations, women and children, the elderly, youth aging out of foster care system, that's a huge hole in the system, persons with medical conditions, and persons who are the top 10 list, who are ready to get off the streets and into recovery.
I think you meant 100 list. I don't know. It says 100 list.
So sorry?
It says top 100 list up there. Did you mean 100 or 10?
No, it's for persons on the top 100 list.
Okay. Thank you.
And there may be the first 10, or, you know, if we're successful, we'll get into the next 10, and the next 10, and the next 10. Capital improvements. Consider using community development block grants and redevelopment agency funds for capital improvements in the lower Milpus Street area to mitigate the impacts of the shelter.
Chair Falcone, just while you were already interrupted on about the top 100 list.
Oh, please, continue.
Is the top 100 list movie stars, or what is the top 100 list?
I'm going to have Captain Mannix explain that, as they have developed it. Yeah. No Oscars here.
I guess one of them might be a movie star.
They have issues too. Frank?
We simply looked at our arrest data for citations, which are commonly issued to street people, homeless folks, and we just ranked them in category of most frequent offender all the way down to one. And then if we just take the top 100, it basically ranges from people who have about nine to 83 citations in a year.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that your question? Okay, great. Next, this is really a vital component, and I'm not quite sure how the community addresses this, but this is the significant need for additional detox bed. We recognize it, and we would like to direct staff to work with securing locations and funding for more detox beds and recovery beds for homeless individuals with substance abuse issues. Working with the interested organizations with zoning issues related to detox and recovery expansion. Work with interested organizations in securing funding needed for detox and recovery bed expansion, and encourage them to apply for the same city and county human services funding. Work with the Salvation Army and detox service providers to determine the appropriateness of expanding their facility for recovery, and if appropriate, to offer expedited discretionary review process. As Dale mentioned, to continue and expand the restorative policing program is really an effective, a very effective program. And I thank Chief Sanchez, actually, for bringing it to Santa Barbara from a former jurisdiction where he worked. Training police officers on restorative policing strategies when working with all of the folks who find themselves in these particular circumstances, but particularly with the mentally ill homeless folks. And expand the number of restorative policing officers in the department. In fact, the deputy chief mentioned in one of our last meetings that really, as part of the training that all officers go through, there is a restorative policing component. Now, some get much more in-depth training and develop expertise, as Bob Casey did, and as several others in the department now that he has retired have that expertise. But it is really, it is really a critical thing that everybody understand, at least the basics of how to deal with folks who are mentally ill. It's very challenging. I've worked in the field, and it's, you need to know certain things professionally. All right. Well, the last couple of slides, I'm going to hand over to Helene. I know you're taking over a little early, but I've talked enough.
Thank you. And I, as I'm waiting for the magic box to get over the magic mouse, to just acknowledge the number of people in the room of all, from all parts of the city and area. So thank you for being here once again, familiar faces. One last thing on intervention. It sort of felt like a pot of money falling from the sky and saying, "Where did this come from?" There actually is a fund that, maybe one good thing from La Entraada came out of, I'm sorry, I'm being catty. But there's a fund that, when La Entraada was first permitted about three years ago, the Coastal Commission, when it approved the project, put a condition of approval of a $1 million dollar amount that would go to the city to be used somehow to mitigate the loss of affordable hotel accommodations in the Hotel California. And that was known as the Coastal Zone Affordable Overnight Accommodation Fund. And that fund has been sitting in an account now for three years, earning interest. And this committee thought that we should utilize it as a way, as a form of intervention to assist people who either are being turned away from shelters because they're full. For example, last year, 90 families at Transition House had to be turned away because they were full. And to work with our law enforcement and the street outreach teams in finding a place to actually help people find a place to stay overnight and have it paid for as an inventive measure, not as a permanent one. Certainly something we would need to coordinate quite a bit with local hotels and figure out what the criteria is, what the screening mechanisms would be. There's a lot of questions, but there is this fund available that if we just use the interest from this fund, so it becomes sustainable over time, we're still talking about $45,000 to $50,000 a year. So that's pretty significant on an ongoing basis. And again, this is the third one we're looking at in the assessment protocol of how is this process working? Who's receiving these kind of services? How are they moving out of homelessness by receiving this service? So that is the last one on the intervention. The final two on prevention, even though there are only two out of the 12, in some ways, if you think of it, the more we can prevent things, the less work we have to deal with in intervention and enforcement. The first one, as Dale mentioned earlier, had to do with combining a Santa Barbara Cares Program or an educational campaign in the downtown area specifically to the community about panhandling and about the negative consequences to panhandling, and to encourage people who do want to give, and for all the good reasons, to help people in need, to do so in the way that's most productive. And as was mentioned by Dale earlier, this would be in conjunction with the anti-panhandling ordinance. That's recommendation number one. So the two would work in parallel with each other. So there's been lots of models around the country we can look to as an example. One that's quite innovative that won't quite work here, but it's the kind of thing I'll bring up as an example, is in the city of Denver, where they have a, I think it's called Change for Change, or something like that. They converted parking meters into these kind of collection boxes with signage on the parking meters where they could, people, if they wanted to instead give money to someone panhandling, they can put it in the meter, and the money goes directly to homeless outreach workers and to their statewide and citywide 10-year-plan. Now, we don't have parking meters. We're not suggesting to create parking meters just to convert them on state streets. So don't, you know, that's not what we're saying. But that's the kind of thing that we can look to as an example. And certainly, this would require significant coordination. would require significant coordination with the downtown organization and area merchants to make this work. And then the last, the last recommendation, number 12, having to do with prevention, has to do with something we've been doing all along but need to continue, which is continue to provide new affordable housing projects in the area, specifically focusing on permanent supportive housing. And this is a type of housing model that's been relatively new in the city of Santa Barbara. The first example that came about was El Correo, that the Housing Authority is managing along with the Contract for Social Services onsite, 24/7 onsite. So the idea is you give a homeless person, in a lot of cases, a chronically homeless person, off the streets into shelter with services right there for them and catered to whatever it is that they need. And it's actually a lot more cost-effective than going to all these different agencies on his or her own and trying to figure that out on his or own, especially if they have some form of mental illness or substance abuse concern. So, and the most recent one that happened in the city was the Mental Health Association project, the 51 units on Garden Street. So to continue doing that, now that obviously requires a lot of coordination, a lot of funding from different sources, working with the nonprofit housing agencies or the Housing Authority into coordinating that and finding the funding to do that, and our own redevelopment agency, which is sunsetting soon. So this is a big concern as life, as we move forward with the end of the redevelopment agency funds. To give an example of, and actually, this doesn't say in the assessment protocol, but it is something that the Ten Year Plan and Chronic Homelessness Governing Board is looking at and monitoring countywide. I could, I can let you know that since July 1st of last year up through now, countywide, there's been 76 chronically homeless people placed into permanent supportive housing countywide. And we're monitoring this, and we, our goal was to reach 90 by June, and I think we'll exceed that. And part of that monitoring is figuring out what happened to them before they got the housing, and what, how are they becoming more self-sustainable now? And how is that helping us both on an economic level and as well as their own quality of life? So those are some, and obviously, doing these kind of projects take time. So that last bullet about master leasing is one way to try and create more housing opportunities on a faster level. The way master leasing generally works is the Ten Year Plan, Bringing Our Community Home, which is the Ten Year Plan Agency, or another housing nonprofit agency could fund using existing apartment complex, or something that's already there, working with local landlords in master leasing a number of units, and then providing that as a permanent supportive housing scenario with services there. Could be a house with four people living in it, there's different combinations of where that could be. But what it does do, it doesn't mean we have to build something from scratch and go through the whole planning process and construction. So it's stuff on the ground already, and that's something that Bringing Our Community Home is looking at, and looking for grant funds to do that as well. And then my last slide, in terms of future work, all this is really great on paper, but it takes the actual implementation to make it really mean something. And so that is, that's a key piece. And there's certainly things, I know, assuming the rest of the council moves this forward, that the city can do very easily. We can easily go through the motions of going through an ordinance, not that the ordinance would be easy in and of itself, but that is a typical thing a city does, or in terms of training our city staff and our police officers, that's a typical thing cities do, or interacting with the courts and dealing with infractions or misdemeanors. What's harder is how can the city continue to keep the momentum going on the things that we don't have direct control over? The Santa Barbara Cares Program alternate panhandling campaign with the downtown organization, or the coordination with the street outreach, all the different organizations that have street outreach terms, or coordinating the hotel, the accommodations. There's a lot of different pieces to this that the city can't have total and doesn't have total control over, but we need to continue working with the various stakeholders in order to make it happen. We think the development of an assessment protocol will keep us accountable, keep the program accountable, it will actually help in the future in terms of looking for other kind of grant opportunities, because I can tell you foundations always want to know, they want to get a return on their investment in terms of change. And it's good for us to know that we're not just doing something, making assumptions, but we actually have good data to support it. So the final recommendation in terms of future work is to bring this back after one year to see how we're doing, and it might need tweaking, and maybe there's some things that have been lagging behind, and this is a way to make sure all 12 recommendations are actually being implemented as a package. So, and I think you wanted to...
Just in conclusion, thank you. In conclusion, I think it's important to mention that homelessness, or housing challenged, or mental illness, or drug and alcohol addiction, these are complex social problems that cannot be solved by the city of Santa Barbara, certainly. The state of the current economy, California's budget crisis, involves Santa Barbara County's alcohol, drug, and mental health services, their budget. It's going, it affects all the most vulnerable persons in the community, and the agencies and the programs that try to respond to their needs. Depending upon the trajectory of the economy, there's a potential for the problem to get much worse before it gets better, as part of why we all need to work together. And you hear, you'll hear, you hear me say that often, but nobody does it alone, it all takes partnerships, and we have a deep need for real working partnerships in this arena. The five issues discussed by the subcommittee, and the 12 recommendations that evolved out of these meetings are intended to provide concrete strategies, maybe some solutions to address specific issues in the city, not to solve the issue of homelessness, because that takes a village, to use a trite phrase. The package received a unanimous vote at the subcommittee level. We had nine meetings, as I said before, that were at least three hours each, that's close to 30 hours of dialogue, with a room more full than it is today, with every segment of the community that this issue touches, in the room, having comments, not timed, just dialogue, back and forth. And it was a dialogue, and I hope that everybody feels as though they were heard. We heard every possible type of comment, we listened intently for all of the meetings, didn't really speak much until the last meeting, where we incorporated our ideas and our takes into the document. So this is really community-generated. The last meeting, all of various different parties who had come into the room with varying different thoughts and disparate ideas of it should be all prevention, or it should be all enforcement, it ran the gamut, everything in between. There was a tremendous sense of teamwork and of unanimity in the room, and it was incredibly supportive from all the various different parties. I was greatly honored to see that the process had worked to such a positive end. I know that, I'm not going to speak for my colleagues, but I think that when you enter into a process like this, and when I asked the council to create this subcommittee, I had results like this in mind, I was very hopeful, and I'm very grateful that the community has come together in this way to be able to come to positive solutions. Now, I look forward to hearing from the public today, again, and for hearing the other council comments who have not been a part of this process, but I do hope that, as was said before, this is a package. One piece does not work without the other. It's all interlinked. It's complex, just like humans, so I look forward to it. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for the opportunity to be able to present this, and thank you to my colleagues for all of your help and your patience and your efforts today.
Do you want to add anything before we hear from the public? Okay, thank you. We have people from the public, are there any questions up here? Okay. Lazarus will be followed by Bob Hanson. We have about 14 people who'd like to speak to us. And if you can keep your comments to the presentation, it would be helpful.
Well, good afternoon again. I just want to cite John Ruskin, and, you know, I see you focusing this whole thing on the idle poor. You know, have you ever read John Ruskin's, I think it's A Crown of Wild Olives? You know, you're not focusing anything on the idle rich. You know, what about the idle rich are causing more problems in this community than the idle poor? And as far as this legislation I'm looking at here, yeah, it's full of holes, cracked, what, Catch-22s, cracks, completely something that's flawed. You're talking about treatment, but then you're not talking about giving people assistance. And something I was going to bring up in the budget meeting today that I missed to come over here, is, you know, you're not looking at the possibilities for assets, you know, all you're, you're looking to create liabilities. In other words, a lot of people who are living on the streets aren't getting any assistance from the federal government. And I've written letters to Mr. Wiley over there, now that the city should go after that, because that would provide the city with an asset, rather creating a liability. The federal government, of course, under the law, a lot of these people you're talking about are entitled to assistance, and they're not receiving it. You're saying nothing about that. There's so many flaws, you know, you actually just go on and on and on. You know, like number five, that's all one-sided. Where are you giving these people who are receiving these citations the opportunity to participate in these meetings? No, you're not. That's all one-sided between somebody who's completely unofficial and appointed in an unofficial basis, as really, you know, what, you're giving them control over, you know, you're basically creating another Getmo Bay here for the homeless people, where, you know, you don't have a right to try, you don't really have a right for formal charge or accusation, you're just going to be incarcerated because you're homeless.
Thank you.
But, you know, Bin Laden, you know, his whole thing was a crashy economy. You know, the people who have succeeded in that are actually getting rewarded.
Thank you. Bob Hanson will be followed by Bill Collier, and then Linda Miller.
So we get two minutes each? I remember when it somewhat started for the emergency cold weather shelter, it was at the Unitarian Church, and that was good, people got out of the cold weather. Then it went to sharing it with other churches for the winter, that's happened, and then it went to the Casa de la Rosa and the Armory. And finally, we, or at the Casa Esperanza, the House of Hope. Well, now that's turned into a recovery center. It's not an emergency cold weather shelter safety net, it's turned into Mike Foley's recovery center, that's how he raises money. Hey, I'm going to get these people, they're going to recover, they're going to get the housing, and they're going to live happily ever after. That's a great thing if it happens, but a lot of times, homeless people, takes a few times to get them back on their feet, but sometimes they don't make it. And we need to realize that that is not happening right now. So let's just say we give them more beds, they're going to have 140 year-round. That means there's only going to be 60 for the quotes, emergency cold weather shelter safety net, which is basically turned into recovery, because if you have alcohol in your breath now, sometimes they kick you out, which wasn't the way that was intended. It was intended to come in and have a place in the cold weather, and, no, that would enable people maybe, and that's what it's all about too. It's turned into, we don't want to enable them, that doesn't raise money for people to tell them that we're helping and enabling homeless people, we want them to know they go into recovery. And that's not really real. So we need to really look at that, that people need a space. I hope that, you know, President Obama would sit there and say, hey, let's open buildings all across this nation, this is a disaster, this is, you know, a disgrace what's happening. We could open parking lots, because cities all across the nation, just like yourselves, are making up rules, just like we did with the RVers, and how can we trust you, what you did with the RVers, how can we trust you now? So it's all about trust, and the homeless, they don't trust.
Thank you.
What you've been doing to them.
Bill Collier, followed by Linda Miller. We don't clap in here, if you want to clap, go watch it on TV and then clap your hearts out, not here. Thank you. Bill Collier?
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Bill Collier, and the executive director of the Downtown Organization. And the Downtown Organization would like to acknowledge and thank the city of Santa Barbara staff, the Police Department, and the City Council Subcommittee members for their important roles in bringing these issues to the table and allowing for an open forum of ideas and solutions. We believe both the residents' and visitors' enjoyment of the downtown is an essential component of the area's economic vitality and the community's well-being. Poor behavior in an unsafe or threatening downtown environment is unacceptable, and we feel these recommendations are a good starting point to address that very basic fact. We hope that the City Council will accept these recommendations, and we look forward to collaborating with the city, the Greater Santa Barbara Restaurant and Lodging Association, Santa Barbara Conference and Visitors Bureau, and Santa Barbara Chamber of Commerce in helping to implement these important and timely recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collier. Linda Miller will be followed by Kathy Janega Dykes.
Good afternoon. I appreciate the time and effort that's been put into looking at these issues. And I really am frightened by several things. By number one, what's offensive. I find it offensive that a person can deny me access to their business because they think that I'm going to cause them harm. It is in the way that homelessness itself is portrayed. Not all of us are drunks and loadies, and I think when you lump it all together, it makes it a tougher issue to solve. I am frightened of what will happen when you get done with your top 100. Will it work its way down to me or someone like me? Will that person in the house, in the county, or in the city be able to come out and say, I am offended by you, you must leave? How can I stand up and accept this? I cannot, because it does not leave it open for me and others like me to say I am offended by hate mongers. Who do I go to to stop this?
Yes, hate mongers.
Thank you, to be followed by Kathy Janega Dykes, and then Barbara Allen.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council.
Let me just say, we're going to cut off the, we have enough of these speakers, we're going to cut them off there. Kathy?
My name is Kathy Janega Dykes, I'm president of the Santa Barbara Conference and Visitors Bureau and Film Commission. Santa Barbara County currently attracts 10 and 1/2 million visitors annually who spend about $1.35 billion. This industry, which is so vital to our local economy, is certainly being impacted by aggressive panhandling in our community. And while all members of the hospitality community are sensitive to the needs and the problems of the people that we do have on the streets, we recognize that it is truly the conduct, whether it be aggressive panhandling or threatening behavior, that's the issue, certainly not the condition. We promote Santa Barbara as a safe, green, clean community for visitors, and our problems with aggressive panhandling currently contradict this image and create an unsafe environment for all. As referenced earlier, this subcommittee was made up of a number of stakeholders who really helped to craft a well-thought-out list of recommendations that not only will benefit those who are currently panhandling and living on the streets, but as well as our visitors and our local residents as well. I urge you to support these recommendations.
Thank you. Barbara Allen will be followed by Julie Cooper.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Loom, and members of the council. I'm speaking today for Casa Esperanza as president of its board of directors, and I want to thank the committee for all their efforts in completing this report. We are in support of many of their recommendations, and we acknowledge that there is much work to be done to implement these recommendations with fairness. Simultaneous social service responses, such as outreach, alcohol and drug treatment, and bed capacity, will be key to success, and we are pleased to see that these are acknowledged in this report. We thank you again and look forward to partnering with you to give dignity and support to our homeless neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Julie Cooper will be followed by Maureen Earls.
First of all, I'd like to say I wrote down on their recommendation six, and it's actually nine I want to talk about.
Well, we're on 16 right now. Well, we're on 16 right now.
Well, yeah, I'm talking about the recommendations.
Yeah.
Yeah. I want, I would like to say something about your restorative police officer, Hove. First of all, I'm disabled, I have Tourette's, and I don't think that Officer Hove should be anything, have anything to do with the mentally challenged homeless people out there because one day I was standing on my sidewalk outside of my motorhome, and Hove walked around my motorhome with a camera in his hand, taking pictures of my motorhome, and he started towards my door, and he said, what's in there, a generator? And I said, no, and I stood right in front of, in between Hove and my door, and he physically shoved me almost hard enough to lay me on the ground, and then he leaned to open my door. I do not think Hove should, that's all I got to say.
Okay. Thank you. We don't usually let people make personal attacks here, so that's just not a good idea. We're trying to work on public policy. Maureen Earls will be followed by Ken Tisher, I think it is. Thank you, I might have misspoken, there you go. Thanks, go ahead, Maureen.
Good afternoon. As a CLU representative and the others that could not be here today, we've been attending the meetings of the Subcommittee, and we've been speaking at these meetings. We come as partners of the city. The churches currently serve on the front lines, we prepare meals and offer financial services for Transition House, Casa Esperanza, the Food Bank, Community Kitchen, and the Falding Hotel. And CLU has addressed to you in an email our concerns with the recommendations that came before you. I want to just stress three of them right now. One is, we support the stated intention of the plan to implement these recommendations as a package. It's a top concern for CLU that all of the recommendations be implemented and not simply those involving enforcement, which would be the easiest and the quickest to do. Furthermore, we consider it essential that this process be monitored and transparent, as Selene mentioned, but that it be monitored online so we can all see throughout this year how it's going, that all three of these are being implemented simultaneously, and we can know and keep, we put a lot of time and energy into this, and we care a lot about it, and that's a really serious request we make. Secondly, we state that our concern with the enforcement strategies is that while punitive measures may be effective for some offenders, according to John Butney, the outreach workers have reported that over 50% of the chronic offenders in open container violations have been the chronically homeless, which means they are the mentally ill or have disabilities. And placing mentally ill citizens in jail, which is what these ordinance eventually will do with that population, 50% of them, really lacks respect for these vulnerable people, but also remains fundamentally a waste of taxpayer money and has been proven to be unsuccessful for this population. We have testimony of that during the meetings. And so we believe it's critical to prioritize the intervention and preventative measures before any new enforcement recommendations are put in place. And the last thing is the Community Cares Campaign. We believe that it's a really great idea for the sole purpose of hiring additional outreach staff to help move those who are homeless off the street and into supportive housing. The idea of an impersonal box doesn't sit well with us. If we had coupons that we purchased and that money went to hire outreach people, but you could give something personally, face-to-face, that to face communities would really make a difference. Otherwise, I don't see this box being effective. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. Ken Tisher, followed by David Damiano.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Ken Tisher, and the reason I'm here today is to talk about closing the Casa rather than helping them. In the 80s, I sat on the streets and I took donations in the ring to try and get a shelter, to help us homeless have a place to, where we could go, get out of the rain, or even when it's hot, just, you know, get out of the sun. Now, when the Casa opened, because Officer Katia told them that I'm a known drug dealer, which I don't do, by the way, they refused to let me stay there. Three or four years ago, I was told that unless I had a Casa card, I wouldn't be able to get any medical help, I wouldn't be able to get housing, I wouldn't be able to get psychiatry help. I refused to stay there because their rules are worse than prison. I'd sooner be back in prison than living in Casa. Now they got a flu bug going around, and people are dying. I think they should close the place down and start over, you know, get some new rules, get some people, you know, that know what homeless is all about. Thank you.
Thank you. David Damiano will be followed by John Butney.
Madam Mayor, members of council, thank you for your time today, and I would like to also thank the Subcommittee for all of the work that went into this. Again, I'm David Damiano, I'm standing here as the president of the Board of the Downtown Organization, and we definitely support the recommendation before you today. And I would like to make a comment in regard to the donation box. I do feel that that is an important component to this program in order to make sure that we are providing the much-needed resources to the community that we're speaking of today. And I would hope to see them all along State Street, assuming HLC would approve that. And I urge you to support the recommendation before you today, and once again, thank you for your time.
Thank you, David. John Butney will be followed by Steve Hislop. Is he here, Steve?
You just didn't recognize him with the tie.
Yeah, no, he doesn't have a tie. No, John Butney looks very good, that's good.
Yeah, I'm in disguise today. My name is John Butney, I'm the project coordinator for the 10-year plan to end chronic homelessness. I wanted to start just with two brief comments on the actual report. On page 11, under intervention, you have an item, and I've spoken to this about five times, and I don't think anybody's ever responded, encourage outreach teams to build on the current weekly meeting held at Cottage Hospital. That is not a good idea. The Cottage Hospital meeting is focused on discharge planning for people who are in Cottage Hospital, it has to do with health issues. Outreach workers who work the streets and are in contact with people in Cottage Hospital are already present, but something this vague doesn't make any sense, it really doesn't fit here. And then, on the next page, on page 12, the top bullet talks about using the street outreach teams as kind of, I don't know what you'd call them, go ahead of the police before they do their raids. That is also a very, very bad idea because it will compromise the effectiveness of every outreach worker who participates because it will appear that they are simply another arm of the police, and it will destroy the relationships of trust that they have been building that are critical to getting people in off the streets. So those two things, I think, really need to be, need to be reexamined. Just generally, I think overall, there are some, I think there are some really good things in this, in this proposal, in this report, and there are also some problem things. And I'm just going to make some general comments because I know some of you haven't participated in this. In successful programs around the country, downtown programs, there are three elements: outreach, housing, and supportive services. Very, very basic, very, very simple. Also included are other kinds of transitional programs, drop-in centers, the shelters, treatment programs. If we had those things tied to the work that were going on downtown and not just Casa Esperanza, that would create a whole different atmosphere. The people we are dealing with primarily, as someone else mentioned, the chronically homeless, at least 50% are mentally ill and dual-diagnosed with an addiction, they just need a place to go. If you provide that, you will solve about half of the problem. If there was a drop-in center somewhere in the downtown area where people could just get off the street, a lot of what you're talking about would go away. I would also say that in my research on other plans, tenure plans around the country, wherever law enforcement, law enforcement officers are used for outreach, they receive special training beyond what you do here, special training, basically they become social workers to deal with the mentally ill and to deal with addiction. You can't just give a policeman a couple hours of training and expect him to go on the street and deal effectively with the homeless. It's not going to work. Denver has a, their outreach program, they have 23 outreach workers and two full-time police officers. That's a pretty good ratio. That's what we should be, that's what we should be going for here. One other, just one other point, real quick. One of the items here talks about $100,000 for an additional retired police officer. That would be one person on the street and another cop, which basically just goes down the enforcement road. For $125,000, you could get another two-person outreach team, eight hours a day, seven days a week. Now you do, you do the math. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Steve Hislop.
And we have, by the way, applied both to the city and the county for money for outreach and for discharge planning, and we are working with the sheriff to create a discharge planning program that will have a big impact on this.
Okay, good. Thank you. Steve Hislop, followed by Steve Cushman.
Madam Mayor, council members, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak today. Special thanks to Eya, Dale, and Helene for your efforts on the Subcommittee, to all the agencies that came and spoke, to all the individuals from the business community, from the homeless community, and the different sectors that Eya alluded to earlier. I'm president of the Greater Santa Barbara Lodging and Restaurant Association, I'm also a board member of the Conference and Visitors Bureau, a member of the Chamber Business Leaders, and one of these days, maybe the DO will let me join their group. I'm looking forward to meeting and working with all of the different individuals towards the adoption of these recommendations and hope that they do move forward. I would like to make two comments that I think are important. Eya gave a tip of the cap earlier to something that came up during the course of the Subcommittee meetings, and that is that we have a model out there, the Committee on Youth and Gang Violence Model. There's been some terrific work that's been done there in terms of organization and results that truly is, has been remarkable, and I look forward to using that as a similar model. The other is, I think it's important to mention that there are a lot of residents who have other things that they need to be doing at 3:25 in the day, might be working, might be picking up their kids, not sure what it is, but one of them probably isn't being here. And I could go through a laundry list of emails and comments that I've had from different residents and business people. We've heard them at the Subcommittee meetings, but it is something that is very much of concern to the residents of Santa Barbara. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Steve Cushman will be followed by Mike Jordan.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Steve Cushman, I'm president of the Santa Barbara Chamber of Commerce. I was president of the Downtown Organization for eight years, and I've been president of the chamber for 20 years. It worked on this issue all of that time, seems like old times right now, looking back in the audience. Yeah, I think you and Dale and Helene did a great job. I really think it's very comprehensive, and I particularly like the ordinance for downtown. I think that's well thought out. Listening to everybody, what truly touches me is that we're probably, all of us, only one catastrophic illness away from being homeless. And I appreciate what you're doing, and I think you're treating people with as much dignity and concern as you can, just as most people in Santa Barbara do. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Jordan, followed by Bonnie Donovan.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and council members. I too would like to thank the Subcommittee for the work they did, and I think most of you probably know that I participated in most of those meetings under a variety of hats, but I'm really here today to talk about Steve's subject and suggest to you that you probably have a great deal of work still to do with community members and residents. In the staff report was, was mentioned, community members and neighborhood input, but I can tell you from having been at every one but one of those meetings, that while everyone there was a community member, they were all there under a hat of government, service provider, business interest, or target client. And that, that there's probably a sense of discontent at best, maybe resignation at worst, out there in the community, people that are hesitant to come downtown, they're intimidated, they're fearful, they don't want to bring their children into that environment, and they choose to vote in a manner and go somewhere else, and spend their dollars somewhere else, too. While there's certainly a need for immediate improvement, engaging the residents is going to be critical to both validating the big-picture effort and making sure that this is a success. If it just ends up functioning in the same circle that it has in the past of government to service provider to target user and doesn't involve the community, it's going to end up being just the same as it was in the past. I've also been continually dismayed by actually some of the responses that you've seen here today, and that's attitudes of entitlement. My belief certainly or perception that, that some people are acting in a annoying behavior manner on purpose because they know they can and can get away with it, and actually responses that are, that are somewhat disdainful towards groups and processes that are being put together to actually help those people. Those, again, are very unmotivating and serve nothing to foster the credibility of this effort with your community members. So thanks again for letting me participate, and I look forward to keeping, working with this on you.
Thanks, Mike. Bonnie Donovan will be followed by Nancy McCready.
Sorry, I'm not prepared, but I was at lunch, and I was called on this issue. Seventh-generation Santa Barbara, not planned, we were just at lunch. When I was young and my dad had a business where we still are, in West Beach, I used to feel so sorry for the homeless, and I would pack up before I would go home to my children, hot chocolate mix, hot soup mix, instant coffee, cups, stir sticks in a bag, and pass them out to all those people, which they didn't respect it at all. Then my father told us, you can't complain until you get involved. We helped build the homeless, the homeless shelter over on Yanana Alley and Garden Street. They wouldn't go in there because they said it was too close to the freeway, but that's why we helped build it, because they were living in the trees along the freeway. And it's so sick that a year and a half ago, I called you, Mayor, to come and look at how they defecate all over our properties, and nobody comes and helps us. You call the police for the homeless, and they call them by name as they're laying in the middle of the street, and don't take them away because they're not endangering themselves, or us, or the person that might back over them, yet they are, and they just let them go. We need help in West Beach, which is the alcoholic homeless. We need help on East Beach, which is the drug homeless. And I don't care, you could do this whole program all you want on State Street because I don't care about that, but we need you to come and help us on West Beach and on East Beach, and we've been there for 35 years, and I've been asking you for help forever. And I went to you, Dale, when I got to help get you nominated. And now we got two of you women running for mayor. Whoever starts helping us is who I'm going to work for, and thank you.
Thank you. Nancy McCready will be followed by Pam Weber and Ruth Wilson.
He's such a pain. I just want to reiterate how important it is for outreach training. I would not only like to see outreach training to the people who are going to be doing the outreach, but I would like to see outreach training to the people who are staffs, on the staff of these places that we have. I've seen a lot of abuse happen, I've seen people thrown out on the rain, I've seen women throwing out on the rain because, because people, they get a sense of what a program should be in a certain way, but they aren't taking into consideration, there's a lot of different people who are homeless out there, many of whom are mental patients and do not react normally to some of the things that we need to help them with, okay, that we use to help them with. So I think there's a, I just wanted to let people know that if we're going to have this, we need to say that these people need some training on an ongoing this, we need to say that these people need some training on an ongoing basis, because I don't like to see power trips, and I don't like to see abuse happen to people who really are in the throes of a depression or whatever it is that they have to deal with while they are homeless, and I've seen a lot of that abuse. One of the men who got kicked out was sitting there having lunch, and because he had to go to jail and couldn't follow through with the program, it meant that he couldn't stay there at the shelter. Well, fine, I took him home with me, put him in front of a karaoke machine, and the man was happier than I've ever seen him in his whole life. And just little things like that is what people should be trained in, how to deal with these people, and the different aspects of homelessness. And just remember that they are people, too, and they need to listen, we need, they need us to listen to them also, which would create the program for them. So, thank you.
Thanks. Pam Weber, and then the last speaker will be Ruth Wilson.
Madam Mayor and councilpeople, I have had friends that have been to the Detox Center, and they have stayed in long enough to really become good citizens and are now, like you and I, and working and really, really happy. So, I hope with the Detox Center, when you put it there, that you keep them in long enough so that it really works, and not this revolving door as you have right now, when people are in one day and then out in a couple of three days with a new pair of shoes, which they sell, and they start all over again. Anyway, I think I'd love to support your plan. I think you've done a heck of a lot of work, and it really sounds to me as though, I don't know how you could do any better, and it really should help everybody. I don't care what condition they're in, but I would like to also say that if by any chance you do use the hotels, that you get rooms with kitchens, because otherwise it's too expensive to feed them all the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Ruth Wilson will be your last speaker.
Well, I'm excited. I think it's great. I think a lot of work went into it. I went to a lot of those meetings. I just think the focusing on it and all these discussions are really going to build that bridge that we need for understanding in this community. I, at the meeting, was a homeless advocate, and I saw, you know, the business people. I really respected their position, and I could hear what they were saying, and I think the important thing is, let's give it a chance, and let's keep inputting it. And it feels like you're open to that. So, we'll try it out, and we'll see. If there's snags, they're going to be snags. It's a messy thing to deal with, but thank you, and I did feel excited. I also want to say, I think Casa Esperanza does a lot of good. I think it kind of got panned a lot today. I think it does a lot of good. I go down there with my husband, and I see all the things that they're offering. And I also agree with John Butney about a drop-in center downtown. If we could just get a place there where they could come in, make a phone call, look at the ads for a job, or take a shower, or do their laundry, or just get a little fellowship, I think that would be a terrific idea. So, anyway, teamwork. I'm on your team.
Thank you. Madam Mayor. Just a second. It is to the council, we don't have any more speakers. Could you just take your comments outside if you want to make them? Don't make them in here, please. It's to the council now.
Just, just a...
Thank you.
Just one more thing.
Okay.
That I forgot, one response to something somebody said, and then something I forgot. The Santa Barbara Cares Program, actually, I'm going to credit Kathy Janega Dykes, who came up with the phrase, just sort of off the cuff, this is why she's so brilliant in media, but the Conference and Visitors Bureau, along with some other partners, have offered to try to structure this, because it will be the businesses, really, where these vessels or whatever, perhaps they happen to be, they're not going to be on the street. I pretty much guarantee HLC is not going to go for that, but it will be somewhere. And so, the Conference and Visitors Bureau and some of the downtown businesses and some of the other folks are going to try to structure a skeletal type of program, and I'm sure they'll bring it to us and we'll sort of review it, but they volunteered to take that piece. Also, I absolutely need to call out in some major ways of orders of magnitude here, the staff work that went into this. There's hours and hours and hours of not only just at the meetings, but behind the work to create this document and to pull all of these comments, I mean, thousands of comments and so much information to synthesize it. The amount of work that Sue Gray did was just heroic and superb. Also, we can't, we can't leave out the deputy chief, the new deputy chief, Frank Mannix there, who also did yeoman's work on it and spent untold hours on this. We also have, we also have Dave Gustafson, who heads the redevelopment department, at least for the next few days, a week, and then we lose him, which is a terrible thing, but we wish you all the best in retirement. And Steve Wiley in the attorney's office, painstaking work, especially with the constitutional issues, to make sure we all stayed on the right side of right. And the incomparable Don Olson, who is Yoda to me and a guru in this, in this community. So, thank you all. Really appreciate it very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Horton, next? Wait, is any more from the committee? Okay, Mr. Horton, go ahead.
I wanted to express my very sincere gratitude to the colleagues, staff, and all the community members from every walk of the community that have worked on this. I was thinking back, seeing David Damiano here, when I was president of the DO, it was more than 10 years ago, and we had a number of board retreats back in those days, and this always came up as the number-one problem. I can remember back in the late '90s, middle '90s and late '90s, when I was active on the DO board, and we keep trying, but we've never really gotten to this point before. And I've heard quite a few really good suggestions today, not all of which have been incorporated in the report, some of which I think probably should be, and some criticisms of it, but basically, I think the people of the community are supportive, and I think it's pointing us in the right direction. We've finally focused all of our good intentions on this, and we're going to need some resources, but I'm very encouraged and want to thank everybody that worked on it.
Mr. House.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I want to really echo that appreciation to the committee for your work and all of those who came to participate. I think there must have been a real spirit of openness and participation to get this far. And I think that the, a couple of the words that really resonated for me were coordination, and I would add to that the sense of collaboration, where groups are working with one another and looking for solutions in a really constructive and a proactive way. The model appears to be, from my read here and from your testimony, a balance where it's not lopsided on enforcement, nor even on the nurturing and the restorative side, there's a balance, and those, that, things need to be in balance for something like this to work. I really want to appreciate those from the public and those from the different agencies that came forward and offered their suggestions and their recommendations, and I believe that what we see is not a final product, but the beginning, really, of a work effort that will continue on. We know, as it says in the report here, how complex this is, how difficult it is, and I think the chair's words resonate with me, that this isn't a packaged solution, although these strategies need to be taken as a package. We should be not thinking of this as the, you know, we've figured it out, but what we've got is a structure to work on the situation as it emerges, as it morphs, as it changes in front of us. A couple of things that I feel we should, we should really appreciate, I think that Mr. Butney's comments are the kinds of comments that help to continue to true it up, that make sense to me, that we want to be very, very careful of the position that we put the outreach workers in, that we're, that we find the right models to work with as we move forward, the ones that really are appropriate to this population and to the people that are affected by that. I heard a couple of comments where the words dignity and respect, or dignity and support for our homeless neighbors, one person spoke. I think it's hard sometimes for our neighbors in the general population to hear those words sometimes and understand why we talk like that. For many people, when they bring their families downtown or when they have guests here visiting, and they are, they're met with panhandlers, or they have an unpleasant experience and may be threatening in some cases, they just want the enforcement side to kick in. And here, we talk about a sense of dignity and offering support. So, I really firmly believe that bringing the broader population, our constituents in Santa Barbara, into this conversation and not just stay with the service providers and the organizations that feel that they represent, say, the business community or the rest of us, it's critical that we continue to have an educational component and outreach part and keep good listening going, because it can't be done just by even those of us who are in this room here today. Without getting into any of the absolute nuts and bolts of it, I think that it's important that we not forget this admonition, that it be held together as a package. I've been through these kinds of processes before, and when you start picking it apart or you go after the low-hanging fruit, you know, the easily implementable things, the balance can come off of it really fast. And it was my understanding from this report that this was carefully crafted to be looked at as a package and to be implemented as, and as, you know, without losing that sense of perspective. So, I think that's it. I just want to say thank you so much, and only just for getting us really to a place where we can work on this even in a more constructive way than we have up to now. And I'm in it. I'm committed to making sure that this works out, as I'm sure the rest of us here in council are.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Francisco? Oh, no, I'm sorry, Mr. Williams.
Well, I also want to thank my colleagues, Eya, Helene, and Dale, for the work that you did on this. I really am impressed with the report. I'm impressed with the balance, you know, some of which makes me uneasy, but as a package, I think it's reaching forward, and that's what we have to realize, is that by dealing with all of these strategies at once, we are balancing community needs on several sides of the equation. But I just want to stress the idea that we do not forget, essentially, I think is the most essential part of our prevention strategy, which is to address panhandling through a alternative-giving campaign. To me, enforcement is as important as a ingredient, but essentially, you're, through enforcement, you're attempting to restrict the supply of panhandlers, which is ultimately a fruitless endeavor if you do not address the demand for panhandlers. And every time someone hands over money, they are essentially creating a demand for panhandling. And that's just a basic economic fact, not that I base all of my moral decisions on economic facts. I base my moral decisions on something, as many of you know, far more ancient, which is just the imperative that, in my personal beliefs, that which we do to the least of God's children, we do also to God. And I think that's an important thing as we move through in dealing with this issue in a way that respects the dignity of every person. You know, that, to me, is essentially the ingredients that when we are talking about food, shelter, and some basic needs, that we, as a community, do have a obligation of compassion. But I have done a decent amount of anecdotal research in the community, and as far as I understand it, much of the funds that goes to the most popular panhandling spot is, are, you know, niches occupied with folks who have some substance abuse problems. And I think that compassion does not go along with handing someone the gun to shoot themselves with. Essentially, we have to make sure that people that come to Santa Barbara understand that in some places, and handing over cash to folks is giving them the gun to shoot themselves with, and that's not compassion. And to me, this strategy is not going to work, though, unless there's really strong business participation. I do not know any community where a alternative-giving campaign has worked without strong business participation. And I, Councilmember Horton, myself, and Mr. Whitehurst sort of introduced this idea to several business groups a year or two back, and the Conference and Visitors Bureau was very warm to the idea, but not everybody was so warm. So, I guess what I would really like to hear from is hear from the DO and the Lodging Association, that this is something that we can do. And I'm not really sure that it's something that we can do by putting in anonymous boxes somewhere on State Street. I know that people are, that many business owners are afraid that by putting something in their business, they're going to scare away customers. The only way this is going to work is if there's something at people's businesses. That's how it's worked in other communities, and I just, you know, I love this package, but I'm just wondering, you know, and want to hear from the business community, that this is something that we can do together, because I just think that this is such a vital part of our strategy, that it's not going to happen, that our goals are not going to be reached unless Recommendation 11 is worked on.
Madam Mayor, just to respond briefly, we had long conversations about this, particularly in the subcommittee, where the business organizations, the DO, the Conference and Visitors Bureau, some of the other folks who own restaurants and lodging associations and so forth, it was the topic of discussion, how do we craft something like this? Because it had, something like this had been tried, and there was a tremendous backlash, and so, yes, there is a great deal of fear out there, but I believe that Kathy and Mr. Collier and Steve Hisslop and that group of folk who are absolutely committed to seeing solutions come out of this, you know, David and Mitch and so forth, that they will find a way that works for them, because we all recognize that what you said is true, and how to get there is still a matter of crafting. And I don't think that's something we do. I think it's something because they have the comfort level, but I don't know if Madam Mayor would allow Bill or Kathy to come up and say a word.
I'd love to if anybody wanted to respond, because I believe that that is essential, and that, to me, the city can act as a partner with the business community, but we're not going to be able to do it without full participation from the business community.
I have great hope.
Well, we aren't going to know till we try it. I mean, that's probably the bottom line on it, but if you, do any of you want to come up? Steve can come up, yeah.
Thank you for the opportunity to address this briefly. It's very much a work in progress. We also have had commitment from Steve Cushman with the Chamber of Commerce. I think that the more of the business community that can get involved in this, the better for all of us. It may not be something that everyone is going to be able to choose to participate in, but if we can make it a large enough program that enough people can feel comfortable participating, then I believe it is something that we can hopefully help make work. And it is something that I do believe that there will be some involvement on some level from the city, whether it's staff or council on whatever level, but it is still a work in progress, and we're looking forward to contacting some of the other cities, as you've discussed. We saw a number of the different programs, but I don't know if they worked or how they worked. Mr. Cushman did a lot of this research in the past and found some things that didn't work other places, so still a work in progress, probably more than you wanted to hear right now.
No, I really appreciate you for having the bravery, Steve, to tackle the issue.
Well, you know, I think all cities wrestle with these issues, and I've seen a lot of different programs, so I agree with you. Sometimes it's just you have to figure it out for your own city, and I think it's great that we're trying this, though. It's really, it has worked in other cities. Denver is probably one of the better examples of things that have worked, but we don't want to start parking meters here, so we're not going to do that. But there are things that we can do, and I really appreciate you stepping up to the plate to do it. I think this is a very good package. Thank you to the committee that did this. I watched a lot of your meetings, and I think you
I watched a lot of your meetings, and I think you did a really good job in pulling this together. But I have a couple of things. I appreciate the fact that you tried to figure out how to pay for this, and the Lantrotto money, I had forgotten about it, and so I was really glad that you came up with that. That was a good one. And I also wanted to point out, and I didn't hear you say this, but maybe it's obvious, there is a difference between people who are panhandling and people who are homeless, and sometimes they're both, but sometimes they're not. There are some people who panhandle out there on a regular basis, I could go, you probably know them too, who have a home. And, you know, so it's almost like we're putting too much into one, we're sort of looking at them with the same glasses, and they're really not. But I'm very glad that you are further addressing the aggressive panhandling, because I regularly tell people, I can't do that here. And I don't, I know the police wouldn't like me to say that that's what I do, but I just go up and say, you can't do that here. We don't, we don't allow you to yell out at people or intimidate them. But you are talking about bus stops and parking lots and all that sort of thing, which I think is very good. Ms. Falcone, did you have something you wanted to say? Oh, okay, I thought you, I'm sorry, heard you say something over there.
I didn't say anything.
So I'm really glad you addressed the how to pay for this, and realized that those, the differences of people, and also, I think it's a very caring, compassionate thing that you put together. It's very good. I think also it would be very good for us to figure out some goals, and maybe that's the next step in this. I know we've been going from the 1980s, when we tried to figure out, who are those people that are homeless? I remember trying to figure that out. And now we kind of know, and we're working on it, and we have Casa Esperanza, we have other places too. Maybe the next thing is to say, our goal is to do, and I know that the 10-year plan works with chronically homeless and has goals, but I'm talking about the general picture, to have some goals, and to have goals of the number of dwelling units that we want to put down for homeless folks. And we don't really have those goals. I know we do through the, for chronically homeless. Okay, go ahead.
I think the assessment protocol that we talked about that has yet to be determined, we'll address that.
Oh, good, okay.
There are three major pieces to it, in terms of the top 100 offender enforcement piece, the street outreach, where do they go? And you can find where the gaps are if we then need to find other housing opportunities and so forth. And then the coastal overnight accommodations, you know, how is that working? And if that's working, and getting people out of the streets and getting them stabilized somewhere else, maybe we don't need to build more places. We probably do, but at least we'll have a better sense of who. But getting a sense of real good data that we can then use to have a baseline, and then see where our progress is, I think we'll address those kind of issues that you have.
Okay, good. No, I see that, and that's very good, because there are different kinds of units, too. So we'll kind of get a feeling for that when we see the facts.
And just to finish that thought, the subcommittee is going to gather again, and this is part of the recommendation, that we come together again in 60 days to frame out with staff these various different protocols and tracking systems.
Okay, so that's good. And so there's a lot more work to be done.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, even, you know, beyond that, so, and that's okay.
Just started.
It's okay. We started a long time ago, and I think we're coming along very well. So, Mr. House, did you want to make a motion? I see your lights on.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, I do. I just, one thing that I had noted that I wanted to check with staff. Mrs. Donovan was here a minute ago, and she mentioned situations that she's concerned about. And she, for me, stands as one of the kind, one of many in our community, who at one time or another will have a situation that they feel needs to be resolved. And I didn't see it specifically called out in the report, but I want to, I want to bring it up and maybe just get a little bit of response to the idea that we really have a clear way to address or to be responsive to people who have concerns like the ones that she mentioned here today, or maybe there'll be others, certainly there'll be others. So how do you see that working, and how does that fit into this report in terms of being responsive to people's concerns about any of the pieces of this?
Okay, deputy chief, go ahead.
Yes, sir. It's a difficult problem to solve, and I think that's one of the things that all the committee members realize, that homelessness, in order to buttonhole it into a solution, it's very difficult. The police department, we respond to calls for service when complaints such as Mrs. Donovan comes in, and we respond and handle the problem in one form or fashion or in another. We also instituted the restorative policing program, so we can take the most critically ill and get them the very best of medical resources and attention to kind of move them out of a criminal justice venue and into a medical treatment venue. The problem with a great deal of homeless blight and activity is that it's not illegal. It's not illegal to be homeless, and many people wish it were, and they would expect the police department to act as if it were illegal. And of course, we're sworn to respect the civil liberties of the people we protect. So it's a very difficult problem to satisfy everyone in this type of situation. What we try to do is be proactive with our restorative policing. We do train our officers to be sensitive with our crisis intervention training that we give the officers, and then we do go out and we are reactive when people post calls for service, and we come out to handle the specific problems.
Well, I think then, this will be a comment before I make the motion, a comment and an encouragement would be for us to think about, and perhaps the committee, when they get back together, to think about ways that we can make it so that the community feels heard when they have an issue, and then that that issue gets directed where it belongs, whether it is the police or whether it's to the mental health or wherever it goes. But at least that the community at large feels heard and responded to when they, when they have a concern or a complaint. And I think you're doing a great job, and there's no criticism here, it's just that I think that that's going to need to be a part of it if we want to bring the public along with this. Otherwise, it'll seem like we're doing an exercise that doesn't really, isn't meaningful to them. So, anyway, that's my comment and just my encouragement. I'm going to read the three points in this motion, because I want the community to hear what it is that we're moving today. There's three parts. I move, A, that we approve as a package the 12 recommended strategies outlined in Strategies to Address Community Issues Related to Homelessness in the City of Santa Barbara. B, authorize the council Subcommittee on Homelessness and Community Relations to reconvene within 60 days to review and approve an assessment protocol as developed by staff, which will define a process for measuring the effectiveness of the recommended strategies. And C, direct staff to implement the recommended strategies and return to the council in 12 months with a status report.
Okay. We have a motion, and second, any more discussion? I think this is a really good package, so I thank you all so much. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Thank you very much. Okay, we go to committee assignment reports, and then read your, go ahead and read your two, 17 and 18. 17 and 18, yeah.
Item number 17 and 18, conference with real property negotiators.
Okay, and we will report out next week, or if we report out, we'll just adjourn from those two closed sessions. Thank you very much.